Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, June 3, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting. I'll call the meeting into order. We had a little bit of technical delay there. First order of business this evening, as always, is the invocation of Pledge of Allegiance. This evening, we have Pastor Ron Lawrence here of Jarvisburg Church of Christ. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you so much for this day, Lord. We are so grateful for all of the blessings you give us in life and most especially salvation we find through your Son, Jesus. And, Lord, tonight, as we gather here for this meeting, Lord, we pray that for each and every board member here and all those in leadership, they will seek out your will, they will seek out your wisdom, they will also seek out your truth, they will seek out your righteousness and your justice. And, Lord, we pray that your will will be on all their hearts and minds, and we pray for peace and civility in these meetings, and we pray, Lord, that they also keep in mind the will of the people and that all things are done to please you. And, Lord, we just pray that you be with us throughout this night and that all things done and discussed and decided on will be done and blessed by you. Lord, we pray these things in your Son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is our Ethics Awareness and Conflict of Interest Reminder for the county attorney.
Pursuant to GS 153A-44, a commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the board but may be excused from voting on issues involving the commissioner's own financial interest, official conduct, or on matters on which the commissioner is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234 or 160D-109. In accordance with Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances, it is the duty of every commissioner to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any commissioner have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the Board of Commissioners in this meeting? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict.
I have an appearance of conflict, although I don't think it's a conflict. I just, the applicant tonight for PB 2409, he goes, he and I go to church together and we serve on committees together, and I just wanted to disclose that.
Thank you.
I want to disclose, CA built my, one of the applicants on the thing, CA built my second home, I think in 90, no, 2000. My second home that I, not second home I ever owned. He was the builder, what, 24 years ago. I played golf with Clayton multiple times. I mean, I don't see it affecting my judgment. I think my company, the last time I did work for CA was maybe in 2014 or 15, about a decade. But I just want to disclose it.
Okay. Thank you. Doesn't rise to the level of anything, does it?
No.
Okay.
Legislative decision.
All right. Next up is approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes this evening?
I have a motion for the agenda, please.
Remove.
Okay. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next up is public comment. Public comment. You can discuss anything you'd like to when you come up here this evening. You just have three minutes to do so. So, when the light turns red, we'd appreciate it if you'd wrap it up. And the first person I have signed up is usually the first person I have signed up, Mr. James Mills. Is he still in the audience? James, leave.
He did walk out early.
Yeah. If he comes back in, we'll grab him. Next up is Carol Slamowitz. And just as a reminder, for those of you who haven't come before us, when you come up, please just state your name and address for the agenda for the record. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Carol Slamowitz. I'm a resident of Corrova Beach. My address is 2156 Shad Road. I'm here in support of the ODU vote for, asking for impact studies on traffic, wastewater, and the community in general when it comes to the projects that are planned. A lot of these projects apparently were approved about six years ago, and obviously, it seems with COVID that we are not living in corolla of six years ago. We've already had a huge impact as far as traffic and building and everything else that comes with it. So, our community is designated single-family, remote rural, which basically means it has limited infrastructure. So, when it comes to the building of 170-room hotel in Corolla, which is a mile and a half from our ramp, we're going to be affected by that. And so, it's super important that we have an idea of what that might look like. There's only one way on and off that beach. There's a ramp. Constantly, there's traffic that is sunk in the sand. The sheriff, you know what that even looks like.
Yeah, people can't read signs.
Yeah, it's pretty rough. We had asked for mandatory air down requirements and that they were going to be enforced, and they haven't been. And we all pay the price. Anybody who's driving on that beach is just, it's just getting slammed. So, that is one of the things I would like to request, if possible. One, to have a traffic count done for traffic coming onto the four-by-four. Was there, has there ever been one done?
Long time ago.
A long time ago. In a month that's relevant to peak traffic as opposed to like January, February, maybe a June or July. So, we have an idea of how many cars are on the beach. If you have 300 parking permits, in relation to what? Like, how do you know that those are, you sell 300, but you don't know how many cars are actually going to be on the beach? So, that's one of my requests. We are having an increase in taxes due to litigation that's going on, and I just wanted to say that our fire department is lacking some really basic things like an ambulance that works. Last summer, we had some issues with that. Ambulance got stuck twice in the sand with people in it. We notified the county, and they said that everything was delayed because of COVID or because it needs special modifications. But I don't think you really want to have 10,000 visitors without an ambulance to get on and off that beach. So, anyway, I appreciate you listening to me. There's just so much growth going on, and we're so impacted where we are. We have so little, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right. Next up, I have Donna Robertson.
Donna Robertson, live in the Brumsey area of Moayok. Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight for my three minutes, the same opportunity we all have.
Ma'am, I need to just get you, give me your address, please.
104 Brumsey Landing Drive.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I'm here tonight for the same opportunity we all have. I invite everybody watching and everybody in the room to become involved and a part of government. First thing I would like to do, I don't know how many of y'all have seen it, and I don't even know Ashley, but there is a video out there by Ashley Wetzel on the Moayok page that basically shows all the beautiful things our county has to offer. And I look at that, and she actually gives me heart to think of all the things we do have to offer and all the things we are fortunate for. And I know taxes are an issue, but like everybody else in this room here tonight, I invite everybody to get involved. We live in a household where we are taxed for kids in school, but we don't have kids in school. If y'all or anybody out there are in that same situation, I invite you to volunteer at one of the schools. Make sure that your tax dollars are being appropriated in the right areas, in the right issues. You can't really complain about a problem unless you want to become part of the solution. And some of these people here, I know, some of them I don't, but I'm incompetent in saying that if anybody out there has a solution or an idea or something they would like to talk about, not just us in the room, but the people up here, I'm sure all welcome it. And part of being a community is working together. You know, we all have to figure out, it's not just about what I pay for, but it's about what I pay for that helps everybody in my community. So, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. James, come back in.
No.
Okay. That was the last person I had sign up for public comment this evening. Is there anyone who would like to speak that did not sign up? Come on up, sir.
Good evening. My name's Todd Mitchell. I own two properties in Currituck County. I own one on 108 Sailfish Street, and I also own one on 108 Chapman Lane. I'll take my three minutes of time because I don't want to be the Facebook warrior that we've basically turned into here in Moayok, where you talk about things and then you're not part of it, and you don't come down here and see exactly what's going on. I only know one of you, and that would happen to be Kevin McCord. The rest of you, I have not had a chance to meet. I've had some run-ins with Kevin in our development, had some things I was accused of, which later was found out that it wasn't me, and then I've also helped them when they had some injured people from his lawnmower business. But what I'm here is, I'm here to talk about this tax increase that's coming on July 1st. If what I've read is true, July 1, there'll be a six cent or 6% tax rate. Should bring us close to 62 cent per hundred. Is that about right?
Yes, sir.
You guys know the facts, right? So, like I put on Facebook, at 62 cent, you're 38 cent from what the city of Virginia Beach charges for property tax. That's what you are, 38 cent from them. And what do we have to show for it? What do we have? A school system that's $1.5 million in debt. I believe Ms. Parker said that the school system returned money based upon COVID funds they got, and the county used that money from somewhere else to do something else with that was originally for the schools. Did anybody answer why that money disappeared, what it went for? Everywhere I listen to is I hear an impact tax. We can't pay for an impact tax. We can't make the developers upgrade infrastructure because of the building association. The question I got is, who's responsible for the rezoning of agricultural land to residential? Who's responsible for that? Is it the state? Who's responsible for it? Is it the people that standing, sitting here in front of me? Right? So, it is your, it is your fault that our county is growing like this without the things we need. You can't put it on the state. You can't put it on the building association. The people in this room right here determine whether land is rezoned from agricultural to residential. I bought a $360,000 house. I don't care because you can look it up on Zillow. Brand new, beautiful. Never thought I'd own anything like it. I have an $800 well pump in my garage so that I can run my shower and so that I can run a sprinkler in my yard at the same time. Why? Because of volume. I've said it on Facebook. Volume. But we still allow these small lines to go in on these $500,000 homes. And I'll have to come back because we can get into the fire and all that with the tax. But I just ask you, you're responsible for changing agricultural land to residential. You have that control. No one else can stop it. You can. Use it, stop the building, and give us a chance to catch up. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? All right. Seeing no one, I'll close public comment. Thank you for your comments this evening, for those that commented. Next up this evening is Commissioner's Report, and I'll start out to my left this evening. Commissioner Pan, what's on your mind this evening?
I have nothing to discuss.
All right. How about you, Ms. Kitty?
I have nothing either, do I?
Man, that and a thousand.
I just want to, just real briefly, I just want to congratulate all the graduates from the early college and the high school. Graduation is Friday. I know parents are excited, the students are excited, traffic is increasing, so as they go out there and enjoy their graduation, I would just remind people that that ceremony is going on at 7:00 on Friday, and so congratulations to all of them. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Paul?
Mr. Chairman, a couple of things. I had the pleasure of having grandchildren playing baseball-type softball sports this weekend, both as travel and as rec. For those that are not aware, we have an athletic complex for the softball fields. All of those fields were being used. The Moayok Park Field, not Moayok Park, I'm sorry, the Maple Park Field was in use. The NAP fields were all in use on a tournament, and Parks and Rec was actually using the middle school and the high school softball fields for sports this weekend. I firmly believe it wouldn't have mattered how many fields we have, they all would have been utilized. So, you know, it, they're here, they're, they're all over the place. But I did hear one comment. One family asking the others, hey, did you stay here last night? He said, no, man, we had to stay up in Chesapeake.
You tried.
Why we don't have a hotel, it still escapes me. So, that's number one. The second one is, during the discussion about the four-wheel-drive beach, one of the things I, I remember us, and it brought to mind actually being on the beach last weekend. I know we had discussed setting a no-parking zone, not parking, but I mean like lawn chairs, umbrellas, whatever, on the crossover ramps so that fire apparatus has enough room to turn. Did we ever succeed in changing and making that a requirement or an ordinance?
I think so.
Does everyone remember that discussion?
No.
I briefly do.
But... The thought being, you've got apparatus coming over the hill, they need to be able to make a turn without having to send all these kinds of, without sending an advance party over to clear all the umbrellas away.
Well, they shouldn't, so everybody parks in the middle of the beach, so are you talking about coming straight across the beach to go?
I'm talking about Corolla, not Corrova.
Oh, Corolla. I'm sorry.
Corolla. We're going over Lighthouse.
Got it.
Or we're going over Albacore.
I'm sorry, I'm at Corrova.
There are umbrellas right in front of the beach access, and our apparatus needs room to swing. And we had discussed, I want to say it was 150 feet.
Mm-hmm. No, I, yeah.
Yeah, we did.
And we all agreed on it. I'm just, that needs to come back because as I watched this weekend, we're stuck if, you know, we need to get an ambulance on there.
Makes sense.
That was number one. And then, Mr. Chairman, could you please clarify when the hotel was approved by the Board of Commissioners? Because I don't believe it was six years ago. I believe it was 2006. So, that's been in place a long time, and none of us on this term, yes, ma'am. Anyway, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Kevin?
I got a couple of things. Where she discussed the stuff in Corrova, like the Senate Bill 300, we made, myself and Captain Smith met with our county attorney, we adjusted a bunch of ordinances and put criminal penalties on them. Last year, if you were just stopping people for civil penalties, which it made it really tough to enforce the air down, you really couldn't because of, it would be considered like an illegal seizure of somebody or of a stop if you were just giving them a civil penalty. Now that it has a criminal penalty, the sheriff's office, we have more teeth to be able to do stuff with that. So, that's something that, I've actually wrote people tickets for that before when they're stuck, and then, you know, you just give them the $75 county ordinance for not airing down. But, so I just wanted to address that. And one thing, Mr. Mitchell, and I have a lot of respect for Todd, he's a great guy, he's a fireman, so first responder. 3,500 acres north of Guinea Road was rezoned in 2008. None of us were on the board. He was, and he voted no to rezone that. So, I just wanted to put that out there. And the only big thing, to my knowledge, that we've rezoned farming-wise was, was FOST, which everybody wants another grocery store. So, but some of that was in the north of Guinea Road railroad tracks, some of it wasn't. But I just not, you know, like I said, I appreciate you coming out, and that is an issue in Tucker's Cove on the water, like he said. I mean, that's sad that he's got a beautiful home, looks right out the sound, Coles Bay, doesn't get any better, and he doesn't have water pressure because of the smaller lines. So, but Todd, I'll talk to you about that on another. The graduations this Friday, so the traffic on the road might be a little bit busier, so drive slow. Congrats to all the kids graduating from NAP, early college. We do have lots of amenities in Currituck County, and we have some great schools and some great kids and some great people, tons of great people. So, graduations this Friday, it will be packed. So, that'll be a long, eventful day, but like I said, it's 7:00 Friday night. It looks like the weather's going to cooperate. To piggyback on Commissioner Beaumont's comment about the ball fields, Saturday, I was working for myself, and I was in Grandy coming back, and the traffic was thick. So, I was like, man, I don't want to stop anywhere because I had a big trailer. Long story short, I pulled into Morris Farms. There were so many kids in ball uniforms, not just one team, massive amounts of teams, girls, guys. Our ball fields, which was something that we did in 2013, those things are packed every weekend, and they're tourist-related, and the county benefits from the local businesses is awesome that how much revenue is generated from those. So, like I said, and they're nice, and they're known east of Raleigh. People say how amazing they are. I think that's it for me. Just be safe, it's starting to get hot, stay hydrated. Traffic's picking up. If you don't drive faster, leave earlier. So, because I guarantee our guys will write you a ticket. So, like I said, that's pretty much it. And, oh, congrats, my sister graduate, or not graduates, she's, I'm the baby, she's the older one, she retires after 30 years of teaching here in Currituck County. So, she could have went to Virginia and made like probably $35,000 more, but she pulled 30 here, so I want to, congrats to my sister. I think she taught our county attorney. So, like I said, so this will be her last year. She teaches at Jarvisburg, fourth grade, and she taught at Griggs, and her first year was actually at Knott's Island. So, congrats to my sister, and she probably needs it for having to have me as a brother.
Yep, definitely. Oh, and what's on your mind this evening? Anything?
The video that Mrs. Robertson mentioned, Ashley Wetzel, I've talked to her, and she's agreed to let me get a copy of it, and I will play that as my commissioner's comments the next time.
Okay.
Because the thing about it is, it captures the essence and the goodness of Currituck County, and it's something that I think everybody needs to see.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
All right. I'll be very brief this evening as well. Just wanted to take a moment to address the four-by-four comments. You know, we, there's a, wasn't an official traffic study, I don't think, done, but years ago, Lynn Wilson actually sat out there with the Easy Up, and they did a traffic count during the summer to figure out how many people were coming and going. She was on the planning board at that time. And the problem is, we can't really stop the traffic going out there unless we make it an access-only area. And that is problematic because we don't have the room at the ramp to turn people around to deal with that traffic shut off. So, it is something we have discussed several times at this board in various workshops, and Kevin's even said, just make it an access pass, but it's almost impossible to do at this moment. One of the things that we have asked and need to reiterate with Senator Hennig is to work on the state a little bit to see if they'll give us some more room. We don't actually own the road, we don't own any roads as a county, but where you cross the cattle grate, that's an easement from the state to do that. So, we need more room to create a bigger turnaround in there to create... A little change. Or either move the road up the beach, which was the intent, and now the state has backed off on giving us access to do that across their property. So, hopefully, that'll get worked out in the near future. As far as the ambulances go, we had ordered four, Paul?
I got it.
You got it?
I have it.
Please, fire away.
So, we have a brand-new four-by-four ambulance that went into operation already in Corrova. Two additional ones are on order, they're late.
The one that just got there, I guess it's being serviced for windshield issue, so they're back to driving the whole.
But we have two additional ones that are late. They should have already been on site, and we have two additional street units that should be joining us in one to two months.
Anecdotally, I ordered three trucks from Ford that would have been an ambulance chassis, just a cabin chassis. I'm over a year to get those. It's crazy. So, I don't want to get into debate about any, but anyway, just wanted to bring those couple of topics up and touch on those. Where we're talking about, the text amendment that was addressed tonight, the SFR remote rural was mentioned. That is the four-drive only. Corolla is not, the single-family remote Outer Banks is the northern end of the beach, just for anybody who's listening, and Corolla's a little bit different animal. And that's it for me this evening. Next up is the county manager, Ms. Rebecca. Anything for you this evening?
Mr. Chairman, just wanted to remind you all that the mainland business directory and community calendar website is up and available for folks to check out. It is mainland dot visitcurrituck dot com is the address. Mainland dot visitcurrituck dot com.
And there's also, there's a link on the county...
There is, there is a link on the county site, yes.
Yep, right on the front page.
And then also, previously reported that the House was going to discuss the county tier designation study bill last week. The sessions were canceled last week, so it is now on the agenda for next Tuesday.
Okay. Well, I spoke with Bobby about that, and he pretty much said it's going to move to the long session. They'll set some ground rules, I guess, or whatever they're going to do, but it'll take it up next year. All right. Thank you. Next up, county attorney. Anything for you, Ms. Megan?
No report.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next up is public hearings. First one this evening is PB 24-09, Howard Land Development requests for a conventional rezoning of 67.78 acres from agricultural general business and general business and single-family residential mainland districts to single-family residential mainland and general business. The parcels located in Grandy Tax Map 94, Parcels 168, 161B, and 161C in the Poplar Branch Township. Good evening, Jason. How are you?
I'm good. How are you, Mr. Chairman?
All right.
Good evening to the board. So, this request is to rezone these three parcels, and most of it is currently agriculture rezoned and general business out here by the highway. Here you can see the current zoning. Yeah, is the mic on?
There you go.
Can you hear me?
Gotcha.
All right. There is, there are a couple slivers here of single-family mainland that exist right here, but in general, it's agriculture, general business. You can see the requested zoning lines. They are going to leave this portion here that's out by the road as general business, and the rest of the entire three parcels will be agriculture. I'm sorry, single-family mainland. Here you can see the zoning classes from the 2040 Future Land Use Map, and you can see that the entire area is either G3 or G2, both of which are appropriate for the request for medium or high-density residential development. The total of 26.78 acres, and 23.03 acres going to single-family mainland, and 3.75 acres will remain general business. And the purpose of the rezoning is for future subdivision, and the zoning change will go, will take the available lots from approximately seven to 20 lots. There was a community meeting at which the main concerns were for drainage. Grandy Ditch runs through the site, which is a major drainage feature, and it also connects to other drainage outlets such as Outlaw Ditch, Steeplechase Outlets, and Watery It is, the request is consistent with the land use plan. G2 allows for median density residential developments, and G3 for... G2 allows for median density residential developments, and G3 for even higher density. So the request is appropriate, and it's consistent with land use goal one, lower Currituck land use policy 1.1, lower Currituck land use policy 1.2, and also 1.4, as well as Grandy policy 4.1 and 4.2. Both staff and planning board are recommending approval because it is in conformance with the general purpose and intent of the Unified Development Ordinance, and is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is the farmland, is the agricultural land that this is being rezoned from, is it currently farmed?
I don't believe it is. I can go back to the aerial, but it's just vacant.
It's not, it's not being farmed. Nope.
It's a field back there.
There's a better picture of it.
Can you go back to that picture, if you don't mind?
The zoning?
Yeah, the, that one. The general business, how many, is that, it's like right at four acres, you said, correct?
It's going to be 3.75, but it's going to become smaller than it is now. It'll be just this section here. Let me go back to the zoning request. This one here. So this portion here will stay general business. And currently, it's, it's all of this.
And I will tell you, I grew up right across from that area, right there. There was a hog farm there, and when the wind was right, you knew it. That whole, all those developments, that was a big farm field. I used to hunt, play in there, run through the field, but you know, it's all been developed. There's a small portion, now it's not even farmed anymore. And, but yeah, I'm very familiar, like I said, I still live right near it, so I'm very familiar with that area.
All right. Anything for Jason, anything further for Jason? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, this time I'll invite the applicant up if they'd like to say anything about their development this evening, or have any sage words of advice, or.
Good evening, Jason Mazel with the Timmins Group here on behalf of Mr. C. Howard, who is the applicant, and he is also here this evening if there are questions beyond technical things that I can answer for the board. Just real quick synopsis of the community meeting, we had a good turnout for that. Approximately 10 of the properties were represented there. More, more people than that, but approximately 10 of the adjacent properties are represented. We had good comments from the residents as far as what they had seen in their neighborhoods, as far as the drainage, things of that nature, because that historical evidence that will be beneficial to us in developing the stormwater model if and when we get to that point past this rezoning in our due diligence. Last fall, we actually went out and looked at the Outfall Ditch, heading down to Outlaw Ditch, spoke with the downstream residents there, got some good feedback from them as to what they see during storm events. We also have DOT drainage that runs through the property. DOT has a couple of easements off the highway, so a good portion of the highway drains through this property. All of those off-site elements will have to be managed and continue to bypass and get off this property into the design phase. You're currently going through a rewrite of your drainage ordinance, which we wholeheartedly agree that will be a benefit to the county when those off-site elements are included in your evaluations. We've already begun that process of looking at this project from that vantage point. Zoning-wise, there's, like I said, a hodgepodge of zoning already on this property, roughly 10 acres is general business, about an acre plus or minus in this SFM, and the other 16 acres is ag zone. It is not currently cultivated. The open area outside of the woods is just fallow field. The thought process in leaving the four acres out front is eventually to do, save some commercial property where it's appropriate on the highway. It is not envisioned that we will connect from this development through, to the highway. It will be a single access on the Poplar Branch Road. Again, trying not to promote cross-traffic through the neighborhood, especially with a lighted intersection just down the street. Other than that, the, the main focus here is getting it to about a unit-per-acre density. So from an infrastructure standpoint, it'll, it'll work from a, from a cost. The G2, G3 designations are way more than what the SFM would allow, so we are significantly less proposed at one unit per acre. I'll be happy to answer any questions you guys have, and appreciate your time this evening.
Go ahead, Ma'am.
I was just going to say, the Outlaw Ditch, that does cross underneath the highway, goes right beside the church, correct? And then out to the swamp, or the marsh area and the farm for wetlands, right?
Correct.
Okay, because I know they, a few years ago, they did snag and drag on that ditch, and they cleared that up pretty good, and that helped a lot.
Yes, sir. Yeah, the upstream of the Poplar Branch Road crossing is really, really clean and clear. I think the more downstream side is where they've had the most issues with, with debris, just your normal organic debris falling into the ditch.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, down by the church back there, they've always complained about that area.
So one of the concerns I have is that it's a conventional rezoning instead of a conditional. And in the agenda packet, it said that you plan to do the upstream modeling, and I'm assuming downstream modeling maybe, but we can't require, I don't think we can require that you do that because it is just a conventional rezoning. And that's, that's, I mean, I guess I would just like to have a better understanding than the agenda packet provided me. Why do a conventional instead of conditional?
Well, the uses between the ag and the SFM for development are the same. You have single-family residential. The other uses that would be allowed in ag, there's actually more uses allowed in ag than there are SFM. SFM is probably actually more restricted from a use perspective, and there's only so much you can fit on this property. 20 units is probably going to be a stretch, just given the configuration of the property. As for the upstream-downstream drainage, that's something that will, will be done as a part of the design. It's something we know that the consultant that the county has hired is looking to implement into the drainage manual, so that's something we're already planning on having to do because by the time we get to that point, that should be ready to hit the streets as far as the county ordinances. So we don't want to wait till that comes to start working on that.
All right. Go ahead, catch up. And just so people are aware, if you would, when you guys do your stormwater modeling according to what we have in the UDO, explain what you have to, you have to capture the water, right, on the property and meter it out, basically.
Correct. Put in either control structures or other BNP's that will control that flow of water to try to, you know, keep it at whatever design storm volume it is. If it's a 10-year event, whatever it is, you want to control that runoff at the same rate as it leaves today. One of the things that's been missing from the stormwater regulations over the last few years is what happens to the water onsite and offsite. We've been focused so much as, from a regulatory standpoint, about only what happens within the development. So again, taking that broader brush to look at those things that are impacted both upstream and downstream, again, protecting, not making things worse for our neighbors.
Right.
And when you held the community meeting and explained that, was that well-received by the residents?
It was well-received, and again, we got good feedback from what was happening in some of those neighborhoods. Now, are we going to fix what's happening in those neighborhoods? Not necessarily. Our job's to make sure it doesn't make it any worse. There's certainly some drainage issues in some of those neighborhoods. They've existed for decades, and those were, those were done at a time when we didn't have the regulations we have now.
Anything further? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, this is a public hearing, and at this time I'll open the public comment portion of the public hearing. Of course, I had C. A. Howard, you signed up. I'm assuming you don't need to speak this evening? Okay, we just heard from Jason. Was there anyone else in the audience that did not sign up that would like to speak to this agenda item this evening? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public comment. Any discussion from the board? Further discussion, comments, questions, concerns?
So how far out are we on the stormwater manual redo?
I would have to defer to Jenny. We're, we're in the middle of the process, probably. I would, I would expect it would probably be a few months before that becomes before the board, where that comes before the board.
So just a few months away?
A few months to initiate the first part of the text amendment process. So then that text amendment process will take
90 days.
Three or four months from then.
So roughly six months, maybe?
Maybe by the end of the year, first of next year, it'll be in place.
All right. Make a motion.
Yeah, yes, well, let me just make a couple of comments. Yeah, again, I told you, I did grow up, I do, I do know the soils because I am septic right in that same area. It does the septic systems. I mean, the sandy soils is good there. I have talked to some residents that are some of those developments because that's where I grew up, and, and you know, we talked at a grocery store or whatever, and they asked about the project, and we've talked about it, and I, you know, they did not have any concerns with the quantity of the lots. And once they understood it was going to be like one-acre lots and the quantity, because they said, you know, the rest, there's other developments right there, as long as the drainage was addressed, they had no issues with it. And I have, I have not received any concerns from anybody living around there. I just wanted to point that out. Like I said, I grew up there. Anyways, I'm, after that, I'm just going, I'd like to make the motion, Mr. Chairman, for, to move to approve PB 24-09, Howard Land Development Zoning Map Amendment because the request is consistent with Image Currituck Land Use Plan Goal One, Lower Currituck Policies 1.1, 1.2, and 1.4, and Grandy Policies 4.1 and 4.2. The request is reasonable in the public interest because it would result in a logical and orderly development pattern, would not conflict with the public interest, as is in harmony with the purposes and intent of this ordinance.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mr. Kenny? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, it passes unanimously. Next up this evening is PB 24-10. Don Albion, Howard, request for amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter One, General Standards, Chapter Two, Administration, Chapter Four, Use Standards, and Chapter Five, Development Standards, to require special use permits for certain developments in Corolla that include traffic impact analysis and engineered stormwater design, and to establish additional community compatibility standards county-wide. Good evening, Jenny.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. I'll present the staff report for this text amendment, and then the applicant, Mr. Haller, is here to present his public policy for the, for the amendment request. So I'm just going to walk through, in your agenda packet on page 18 is the staff report, and it identifies the six items that are being proposed to, to change here in the ordinance, and I'm going to walk through them one by one here. So the initial change is for planned unit developments, which planned unit developments are only located in Corolla. It's the predominant form of development in Corolla, in the paved road portion. And generally, these planned unit developments are subject to sketch plans, which is basically the zoning plan with the base zoning and the overlay, and then the master plan or sketch plan shows the type of development that's permitted on the property. So this item number one, as you can see here, there's already a list of a few uses that require special use permits in addition to the sketch plan to establish those uses. And so Mr. Haller is requesting to add a couple of additional uses to this list, one being hotels with 50 or more rooms, and the other being commercial-industrial mixed-use or multifamily development consisting of 30,000 square feet of floor area or more. So those uses would require a special use permit and a planned unit development. The second request is for special use permits to apply for the, for that use in Corolla. So this would, this would incorporate any general business zoned areas of Corolla that a special use permit would be needed in those areas as well for commercial-industrial mixed-use or multifamily development consisting of 30,000 square feet or more located in And then in the procedures for what's required along with the special use permit application, there's the inclusion of a traffic impact analysis prepared by a registered engineer that meets the existing standards that we have in the ordinance that's required for shopping centers, and a stormwater plan prepared by an engineer that meets the standards of the stormwater management regulations of the, the ordinance. So in the summary use table, this is another change, which is related to requiring hotels in Corolla with 50 rooms or more to have a special use permit. So we already have a use of hotel or motel in the ordinance that's allowed with a zoning permit, and you can see that we're adding a use permit. And then in the specific standards for hotels and motels, we're clarifying that hotels or motels located in Corolla with 50 or more rooms are subject to an approved special use permit, and that that special use permit should include a TIA as well as a stormwater plan repaired by an engineer. Then in the community compatibility standards of the ordinance, the applicant's proposing to require buildings that are subject to these community compatibility standards, which are standards that apply to development that's adjacent to existing single-family residential development in residential zoned areas, so not necessarily in a commercial area but in a residential zoning, these standards apply. And this will require buildings to be set back 75 feet from a lot line shared with an existing single-family dwelling to the maximum extent practicable. This is similar to the language in the multifamily design standards that requires, it requires 100-foot setback for multifamily for community compatibility reasons. Then there's existing language related to building height that appears that the intent was to limit building height adjacent to or within 100 feet of a lot line share with existing single-family detached dwellings. But the, the standard is the same as the minimum ordinance requirement. So the, the request is to limit that height to two stories and 30 feet, and that would still be the mean roof height that the ordinance allows. So a max of 30 feet and two stories within 100 feet of a lot line share with an existing single-family dwelling. Any questions on the amendments?
Well, the one we're talking about right now, the 35-foot, two-story, 30-foot, so a house can be 35 currently, and, well, any building, the max is 35, right?
Correct.
Right? So the house next door can be taller than the commercial building, is that, that's basically essentially what we're saying here?
Yes, to the mean, yes, it could.
Look at the air conditioner on the roof.
Yeah. The thought being that these buildings are typically going to be of more of scale and mass than a, than a house may.
Okay.
And Jenny? I have, and maybe the applicant can clarify it, or you, Bill, but it refers to a registered engineer? I've heard of a licensed engineer and a certified engineer.
Registered engineer is consistent with what we use in our ordinance.
We always used to just call them licensed engineers. Can you be registered and not be licensed in the state?
And it's also defined by our ordinance. So we have a definition of registered engineer. It's a person who by reason of special knowledge and use of the mathematical, physical, and engineering sciences, and the principles and methods of engineering analysis and design has acquired by engineering education and subsequently licensed as a professional engineer by the Board established in Chapter 89(c) of the North Carolina General Statutes.
Okay. So under B, buildings over three stories in height shall be broken up. That's currently in there, right? Don't, we have a, we have
Yeah, that's, that's existing language.
The only change is the underscored stuff. I just want to, want to make sure that everybody's on the same page.
Or crossed out.
So how does, if this, if this passes tonight, how does this affect, let's say, the Ennitt-Croll Light, my old stomping grounds burns down?
The Ennitt-Croll Light?
Yeah, it's three stories, it's 35 feet. If you had, if they burned, if it burned down, they had to rebuild, for instance. Going forward, do they have to meet, they have to meet the, you couldn't rebuild it, in other words?
We'd have to know whether, what approval was in place for the Ennitt-Croll Light.
If I remember correctly, if over 50% of the building is damaged
Right. You have to
It has to come up to code in the rebuild or the repair or the reconstruction, I thought.
That's what happened to the cotton gin, Grandy. Cotton gin went through that.
Right.
I'm not, but the Ennitt-Croll Light I'm not, but the Ennecroll light is in a PUD.
Right.
And may have a special use permit. I'm not sure. And that may, that may impact their ability to rebuild.
I don't think it does. I just, but the reason I ask that is because, you know, none of us have discussed this before tonight, and there's other far-reaching implications of the decision that's made tonight. So, but even if they have a special use permit, would they not have to meet their current, isn't that normally how it goes, that they have to meet whatever the current standard is? So, you know, they may have to go back down to 30 feet, which would cut a story off, even with an existing, I don't, you know, that's a legal question. No, you're not a Jenny question. I'm sorry.
Well, the attorney wants to charm in, it sounds like.
Yeah, I think in that scenario, they would have to comply with the new rules.
Right.
Right, if they didn't have some sort of permit, right?
So they might have to go smaller than.
But I don't know, I haven't looked at the Ennecroll light to see, are they located within 100 feet of an existing single-family dwelling?
Nah, I don't think so.
I know that it's less than 50 rooms.
Right. It depends on what you consider within 100 feet. What, because the pool deck out there.
It's the lot line.
Right.
So wherever that lot line is to
Yeah, oh yeah. It definitely is. Yeah, it definitely is. There's homes on Hampton Street back there. But it's just an example. Obviously, I know the hotel, I know that it's 35 feet, because we worked hard to get it to 35 feet to get the third stories rooms on there when we built it. So, okay.
And, you know, keep in mind that obviously you have the ability to approve the text amendment as presented, approve with changes, or deny the text amendment, or say, go back to the drawing board.
Right.
You know, those are your options
Right.
Tonight.
So would this text amendment apply to the proposed development that was approved in 2006 for the 172-room hotel, since it's already been approved?
The development that was approved in 2006?
The saga.
Well, we amended the sketch plan in the last year or two, so that basically undid what was done years ago
I mean, I
on the property, to, for a new site plan, basically, right, for that particular piece of property.
Right, so they amended their sketch plan.
Right.
Right.
And special use permit.
Mm-hmm.
And they also obtained a special use permit for multifamily development.
Right.
But when you asked me the question about that, there's more going on with that than I can probably answer that question, because I'll maybe defer to the county attorney to give an update on that, if you don't mind.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, that is a really interesting scenario, because on one hand, yes, they came before, that particular project came before this board within the past year. And two special use permits were approved or granted by this board. However, the Wellhead Property Owners Association appealed that decision. So right now, that decision has been appealed and probably will not be heard until August. So it really depends on how that appeal goes. Now, let's say if the appeal, if we win that appeal, then that developer could argue a vested rights. They could say, well, we're relying on the rules at the time of the initial application, and we've, when they, when they received that, the grant of approval, and they've expended a significant amount of funds in reliance upon that approval. And if there's really, I mean, the law says if there's any gray area, whether a, an individual has vested rights or not, you really should rule in the favor of the landowner. So, so yeah, that was a really loaded answer. And it really depends on the appeal. But let's say if they didn't, if the appeal was not in place, I think they could argue vested rights, meaning that they, they could choose, they could really choose to go with the old rule, which I know is what I told differently than what I told you earlier, but.
As it stands right now, pending the appeal, they have vested rights.
Yes.
So
I think so.
Just got to prove it, and that doesn't matter.
So this will have, if the appeal is not successful, then this will have no impact on that development. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's my opinion. I think that they could, they really have a strong vested rights argument, depending on how the appeal goes.
Headache to deal with if we put
Oh, yeah.
roadblocks in their way.
Major, yes.
Right. Okay.
So will this have any effect on a proposed hotel on the mainland?
Yes, I believe so. Or wait, no. Hold on, let me look at the language real quick. No. It's just Corolla. Hotels in Corolla. Yep.
Otherwise, you got to go to Chesapeake. If you're playing in a tournament.
So we're really just, like, we're waiting for that appeal?
Yes.
Now, when you said August, are you talking about August, this year, a couple of months?
Yes. Yeah, it's currently scheduled for August 12th, I think. Now, that could, that's always subject to change, depending on the parties and what's going on. But that's the plan as of right now.
Do you know, about Hampton Inn, I'm going to switch gears for your traffic impact analysis is was, is part of this proposal. Do you know if the Hampton Inn had to do one of those when they built that?
I do not know.
I know that predated.
No. They didn't.
And we cannot use that to do, affect anything, right? I mean, we don't control roads. We don't, it's, so let's say the traffic impact analysis, we put this in place, and they do a traffic analysis, and it says that the traffic is terrible. It gets a D rating or an F rating, or to use a school grade system, which I believe they actually use. How does that benefit anyone other than anecdotal information? I know, I know they could be forced to put in a D cell lane, for instance, or a longer D cell lane for stacking, those kinds of things. But that's about it, right?
Wouldn't the state, it would have to then come in and approve all that?
I'm just.
Wouldn't they?
Well, I think, I think a traffic
I know you want traffic analysis.
is important. And to me, what that does is, it illustrates to me, who is making the decision, how it's going to impact the quality of life of both people who are living there, visiting there. I think what it does is illustrate either positively or negatively the review standards. And to me, that's, you know, I do like my traffic impact analysis.
With that said, several years ago, we did an exhaustive, exhaustive search to get a traffic engineer to come in and do that very thing. We put out RFPs, and every one of them said, whatever DOT says, we're going to go by. We're not going to buck DOT.
The thing that concerns me is the, that we can't, we can't use it as a justification. If this is going to be an SGP process, it's not part of our deliberations, because we can't affect, we can't use it.
The only thing it could possibly play would be public safety.
Right, potentially, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I think, for instance, recent special use permit that this board did review for the Corolla Boat Club had a TIA. And at the time, we actually had a staff person who was more versed in reviewing TIAs, and made some comments, and they amended their TIA, and they amended their plan based on those review comments. So I think there is, you know, and perhaps it's something that we would want to review, we would want to have someone with the experience review what's being put forward from the applicant's engineer.
But, but the challenge then becomes, what's the point of view of the traffic study being provided? I.e., you'll get a real estate appraisal company, valuations, and they are, they're supposed to be, you know, neutral, right? But we all know, if you don't get the right appraisal, you'll hire a different real estate appraisal company.
Yeah. And to that point, and this is something that I discussed with the applicant, is, you know, if, if the special use permit isn't the right time or the best way to require that TIA and have it be implemented into the project, then maybe that could occur at site plan. Like, we currently have a TIA required for a shopping center. And so, which, the review standard for the TIA for a shopping center is at site plan. So they are required to give that information. Now, if it's our staff reviewing that, then we're going to rely on probably DOT's assistance reviewing it. Or unless we decide that we need to maybe contract with our own engineer to review that for a large project, you know, that's greater. I mean, the trigger right now for a shopping center for needing it is 30,000 square feet.
So, and to that end, you know, we don't buck a registered engineer. I mean, we don't go to war with a registered engineer's opinion. So here you have a traffic study being performed by a registered engineer.
We, it's not, I mean, we don't, but we do. I mean, we, we certainly review plans that are prepared by engineers and ask questions. And sometimes those engineers say, "Good question. I missed that." Or, "Hey, let me look at that a little carefully." So there is, I think, some value to having someone review that third-party persons.
I agree with that. But at the end of the day, it comes down to what teeth are provided. I mean, we have a different view on a traffic study. For example, I don't know that we've got, and they say, "Well, what we say is what we believe." And, yeah, that was a good question, double line versus a single line, but we're sticking with this. That's the end of our, I mean, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's really the end of the challenge that we're going to put forth. It's up to, you know, we're counting on DOT to come in and go, "Well, you forgot this and this and this."
Yes, and, I mean, that's obviously up to this board, whether
Right.
I mean, I think I've given an instance where we've actually gotten, gotten something better, because we got a TIA, and we had someone looking at it who knew about traffic engineering.
TIAs we get now, what do they comprise of? Trip generation?
What's that?
Trip generation.
Right, yeah, trip generation. The one for the Corolla Boat Club was, and the reason that that applicant actually did it, it wasn't required by the ordinance, but it was brought to you as part of a special use permit.
Mm-hmm.
And they actually presented it in the TRC packet.
Right.
And we reviewed it.
Right. Okay, that was done of their own version?
So I, I don't have all that information.
Because they had a vested interest, not
Not helping it.
The true vested aspect. But, but they wanted a well-designed product, and therefore, they were counting on that to help them with their design elements. So.
They were. But again, it was reviewed and improved based on comments that staff gave.
Okay.
So anyway, that was just a comment I was going to make. Maybe the, the board might want to consider that trigger, if it's not comfortable with special use permit, maybe it happens at site plan for certain projects, like, like a shopping center.
What do we lose by delaying it, do you think?
Well, the applicant may have some, some comments on that. I know when I had mentioned that to him, he had comments on thinking that there was value in this board actually seeing that information, processing the information, asking those questions based on your experience in those areas. So.
Cause I think.
I think just your, I mean, one piece is your view of it. The other is, you know, when you're approving a special use permit, are you approving it based on facts, or something that I'm telling you, I'm going to plan for, I'm going to meet this standard.
Rather than making a condition of approval.
I haven't really shown you how I'm going to meet it exactly. So that's the other piece that the board may be interested in seeing some more specificity with the special use permit.
Well, I guess the heartburn I have is that we're going to, they haven't gotten approval yet, and we're going to force them to spend a bunch of money on, you know, and they have, they have no guarantee at all. Not that they should have a guarantee, right, but there's a reasonable expectation when they come before us, if they have their ducks in a row, that they, in a special use permit scenario, without any opposition, would generally get their stuff approved, right? But it's kind of putting cart before the horse.
I mean, it is in some aspects, and in some, it may not be.
Right. Well, like stormwater, for instance. Putting, putting that in.
Could be.
Yeah, I mean, unless we, unless we make it part of our.
It goes back to, that's part of the risk of development, right? I mean, if, if it's weighted, if, and I agree with you, right, that's a lot of money to sink going out the gate. The risk is, it gets to us, and that's not good enough
Right.
with any project that we've looked at, right? We've, we've rejected, you know, there have been issues that we've kicked it back because of.
Mm-hmm.
The, I'm curious, though, if it's denied, after the special use permit, if it's denied at the next phase, that their whole project is basically suspended.
Right.
What do you mean by the next phase? After a special use permit?
So they come, they get through special use permit, then they come up with their, the plan, right? And if it fails there, what's the safeguard?
You mean, they get through special use permit without it?
Correct.
Right, okay.
Correct. And then it's denied.
And then, or they can't meet
Correct.
the standard, right?
I mean, there's one aspect that, when they get to the next phase, they should be almost guaranteed. Nothing should be a surprise when they get there, right?
Exactly. And at that point, it's just down to them fully designing the project. All the streets going, the swales, the stormwater plan, all that stuff is, is in. And they have to, to build it to our standards to be able to move forward with the project at that point, right? They can't go any further, they can't go past go at that point without, without having designed that. But there's a reasonable expectation at that point that they are, they're basically done with, you know, it's just, it's approvals, but it's, it's on the design.
So are you saying, I'm getting lost in the conversation here. So Paul, are you saying that it's better for them to do these things at the special use permit, because then they have an easier path to the next step? Is that what you're saying? Or are you arguing the opposite? I'm a little
I'm on both sides of that road, right? Because literally, on one hand, I don't want to see anybody put out money that's going to fail. And we should be positioning people to fail. And they should have every reason, if they follow staff's guidance, that they have a path to success.
Okay.
Where frustration happens is, you know, we got through the special use permit, now our traffic study isn't good enough. Or, and I'm going to use FOST as the example, right? They came in with their first plan, and we didn't like the traffic, we didn't like, you know, the density, and it was kicked back. The zoning had already been done, but the use permit then got rejected. Well, they hadn't gone through all of the engineering necessary and invested all of the money. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so I, I think you're making a good argument that those things should be done at the special use permit to prevent the no by this board or the next board in the, in the process. I mean, I'm agreeing with that logic. It, to me, makes sense.
Your safeguard, though, is if they don't do it, they don't get a CO. That's the safeguard.
But, but we have, and it hasn't been in recent history, but we've had applicants come before us that were rejected, and part of this, I'm not going to say the sob story was, well, we've already invested blah, blah, blah into getting this, and now all of a sudden, the county changed their way. So I, that's why not everybody's a land developer.
Right. Okay. Well, we didn't get very far to, or did we get very far to your part of this?
Well, I mean, we've gone through the ordinance language, and if we're, don't want to, at this point, have any more discussion on the language itself, we can move on to, to the land use plan consistency and, and policies that support some of what's being proposed. So I just want to, before I do that, I'll just briefly recap. So require a special use permit for hotels greater than 50 rooms in Corolla, basically in any zoning district, including PUDs. Require a special use permit for projects greater than 30,000 square feet, basically, in Corolla, in PUDs or otherwise. And that those special use permits require TIA and stormwater plan by registered engineer. And then there were the compatibility standard changes to require buildings to be set back 75 feet from a lot line share with existing single-family dwelling and the height and the height standards that you just saw. So with respect to the land use plan, there are a lot of policies that, that, that apply that the board can consider when deciding whether to accept some, all, or, or none of this text amendment. That it's, it's, um, potentially consistent with land use goal one and two, which are, these are goals you guys see all the time, so I won't read those, but they're about, um, basically making sure that developments occurring in the appropriate locations. Land use policy 2.2, continue to prohibit incompatible or poorly planned commercial encroachment near residential areas. Land use goal three, support new and existing commercial developments that adhere to quality community appearance, appearance and design standards, including landscaping improvements and signs tailored to achieve a unique community character. Then economic development goal two promotes, promotes sustainable tourism that improves quality of life for residents and preserves the natural and cultural resources of the county so that we may continue to attract visitors to the area. There's infrastructure and services goal one, to ensure the sufficient provision of services to support associated growth and development. Infrastructure goal four, improve stormwater management and mitigation throughout the county. Transportation goal one, um, improve safety, traffic flow, access and appearance. There's policies about improving seasonal traffic congestion along NC 12, encouraging regional connections. Then in the Corolla area specifically, there's land use policies regarding protecting tourism interests and supporting family-oriented beach. Consider the community's concerns over overdevelopment and beach crowding and making decisions regarding density in Corolla. Protect and preserve natural resources. Continue to improve estuarant shoreline and beach access. Encourage workforce housing or viable community support policies and actions to improve seasonal traffic congestion. Then the land use plan, um, there's an implementation matrix. So those are policies and goals. These are actions that have been laid out in the plan, and you can see here, there's one to require a TIA for uses that will generate a significant increase in vehicle activity.
Hold up for a second, Jenny. So let's take this development, but this is aimed at one specific development. If, I mean, it is. It came about because of this development. I mean, that, it,
Okay.
if, if we hadn't have had this come up, and people's, you know, we wouldn't be talking about this, right?
But that's usually what kicks something off, is there's a problem, let's, let's find a solution, so.
But, um, where was I going with this? If we had, and that, that piece of land will support a lot of homes, would it not? Potentially?
The hotel project land? Um, I think it's like 13-ish acres.
Yeah.
Um, it, it's in a PUD. With a sketch plan amendment. There's, I'm certain there's some density in the PUD, it could pull.
Right. I mean, what the density has got now, right, is, it would be significant, right? So, so the reason I bring that up is because we're talking about, um, making them do that for this because it's gonna be a hotel there. But, um, if it was houses there, it only takes 25 or 26 six-bedroom houses to achieve the same number of bedrooms, right? 172-room hotel to get 172 bedrooms. The sa- you know, why wouldn't it make sense to do that same analysis for, um, a neighborhood? Or a change to that, I guess is where I'm going with this. Because the, the traffic impact could be the, the exact same, or even worse.
Could be, yeah.
I mean, you can throw a 10-bedroom house, and then you've driven by there, there'll be 20 cars at that house, or, or more at a 10-bedroom house, and we've got, yeah, it's the same problem.
Yeah, the, and again, maybe the board thinks this needs to happen with the sketch plans in Corolla.
Right. Um, yeah, it just seems to me that they're, they're almost identical in the amount of volume they're gonna generate in and out of there, potentially. Without a strong traffic impact analysis, we wouldn't know that, right?
Right.
Okay, please continue.
All right, um, another action to evaluate the effectiveness and update the stormwater ordinance. Again, another policy about establishing a threshold and requirement for TIA analysis. Evaluate the ordinance and plan unit development standards to address development intensity by requiring building setbacks based on lot with square footage and/or height. Work with DOT to improve seasonal traffic congestion along NC 12. Then there's just general purpose and intent standards. Basically, um, the reason that we have an ordinance, and I won't read all these, but they're in your agenda packet for your review. As well as, there's some purpose for multifamily design standards and community compatibility standards. This actual text amendment doesn't really, um, relate to the multifamily design standards specifically, but in the community compatibility, those standards are, are provided to, um, for a proper transition and to ensure compatibility between single-family detached development and other more intense development. Provide effective transitions. Prove, protect the character of existing single-family detached development from negative impacts resulting from more intense and incompatible adjacent forms of development and limit interruptions and vehicular and pedestrian connections created by efforts to segregate use and establish or maintain vibrant pedestrian-oriented areas where differing uses can operate in close proximity to one another. And the, um, the planning board and the staff did support the text amendment. And I don't have anything else at this time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further from the board? All right, beat Jenny up enough? All right. Thank you, Jenny. All right, at this time, I'll, uh, ask the applicant, please come on up, talk to us.
Thank you. My name is Don Haller. My local address is 1068 Lighthouse Drive in Corolla. Thank you for considering the amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance that I proposed, and thank you for your public service. This is solely my proposal, it's not on behalf of any other person or organization. I'm making these proposals to fix some huge holes in the Unified Development Ordinance that prevent you, the county's elected officials, from having the authority and information needed to assess the impacts of major development projects in Corolla and to provide better balancing of the interests of developers and the existing community. Together with my wife Sue, we've owned a home in Corolla in Whalehead Development since 1997. We cherish Corolla as a family-friendly beach and community. Our children grew up spending their childhood vacations in Corolla with the children of my brother and my wife's brothers and sisters. And they now come here as adults with their own children. I just got to spend a wonderful week with, uh, family, including, uh, one of my nieces who brought a baby all the way from Atlanta, Georgia, because she grew up going on vacation here, and she and her husband drove through the night from Atlanta to bring her baby to see her family, including her uncle. Now, before I discuss important policies to support these proposals, I want to first show you why you should have an open mind about them and address an apparent concern that amendments cannot be made that impact projects you might consider already approved, as one commissioner indicated in recent correspondence, and whether allowing such amendments is fair. The answer is plainly yes. Under the county's rules, developers have the right to propose UDO amendments for the benefit of their own projects and have them adopted up to the time of major site plan approval. Major site plans have not yet even been submitted, much less approved, for the hotel and multifamily projects proposed for Herring Street in Corolla. They're just sketch plans. Even for the multifamily project, which received a special use permit after hearing last August, and after the developer, Saga subsidiary CB Land Development, signed a special use permit last October that expressly committed it would comply with the UDO, plainly neither the developer nor the board of commissioners believed that was limited to the UDO in effect at the time of the SUP approval or permit signing. The developer was allowed to propose four UDO amendments for the benefit of its Herring Street projects' profits that the board considered at its November 13, 2023 working meeting, and in April 24, one of them was adopted by this board. This was all allowed to occur after the SUP hearing approval last August, where Saga had the burden to show its multifamily development did not injure adjoining landowners and meet other impact obligations. So project changes that would be enabled by the UDO amendments escaped the burden and scrutiny of the August SUP hearing. My position is that the community should and must have the same rights to UDO amendments considered and adopted to further communities' interests, including public safety, that developers already have, to amend the UDO to impact pending projects for the sole purpose of putting more money in their pockets. Otherwise, I respectfully submit that the county would have a double standard in which UDO amendments impacting projects before major site plan approval can only be made by developers for the benefit of the developers' profits, but not by the community for the benefit of the community's interests. So the answer to my two earlier questions, is it allowed and is it fair, is plainly yes. Now, a, a big-picture public policy reason to adopt these proposals, and particularly the SUP requirement for large-scale developments in Corolla, is that they provide an important first step in what should be a high-level strategic review of development in Corolla and its impact that is urgently needed for the future of Corolla. There is good reason to be concerned that Corolla is close to the limits of what its existing infrastructure can support. Whether it be water, sewers, schools, or other infrastructure, all of it is extremely costly and could exceed the tax revenue from additional large-scale projects that could become the proverbial straw that broke the camel's back. You should not want Corolla to end up like Moyac, where development has exceeded the capacity of existing infrastructure, and major new expenditures will be required. To evaluate impacts of large-scale development, it is first necessary to have the authority to examine, to examine them, which in large part, you currently lack. I believe Corolla is at a critical crossroad, which could irrevocably alter its character as a desirable destination for groups of families. Unprecedented high-density development is being sought by developers that could irrevocably harm Corolla as a desirable tourist destination for families and overwhelm the infrastructure, but does not trigger review by its elected officials to assess impacts because the UDO has a huge hole. It only requires a special use permit for certain types of uses without regard for the scale of the projects. This, thus, under the current UDO, you as the elected stewards of the county's welfare require a special use permit for a tiny miniature golf course located in a mixed-use zone to assess its impacts in a public hearing, but have no authority to assess potential harmful impacts of a massive 172-room hotel that Saga seeks to build at Route 12 at Herring Street in Corolla. Among other risks, the BOC cannot assess traffic risks to pedestrian safety because a hotel is just one of many authorized uses of a lot zoned as commercial. It is treated no differently than the tiny seven-room Wild Horse Inn in Corolla. This makes no public policy sense. Huge scale plainly matters in its impacts. It is a potential public policy disaster that you, the elected stewards of the county's welfare, have no authority to assess the impacts of high-density developments such as the largest hotel ever proposed in a sensitive location like Corolla. Thus, the public policy purpose of my first proposal is to enable you, the board of commissioners, to have the authority to review the impacts of very large development projects of multiple types in Corolla by amending the UDO to require a special use permit for a commercial, industrial, mixed-use, and/or multifamily development of at least 30,000 square feet. And I might note, my original proposal include resi- included residential, but I, I was persuaded by the planning department to drop that. Part of this proposal is that the SUP application for such a development must include a traffic impact analysis and stormwater retention plan, two problems of critical importance that the Vision 2040 Land Use Plan recognizes Corolla struggles with currently. The land use plan even directed the county to amend the UDO to require a traffic impact analysis for uses that will generate a significant increase in vehicle, vehicle activity in Corolla, but it was not implemented. With this proposed amendment, it will be. I respectfully submit that the board of commissioners needs to have and should wanna have information about large development impacts and issues of major importance in Corolla to enable the best possible decision-making and to have the authority to take action regarding those impacts through a special use permit requirement with a public hearing. My second proposal is to acquire an SUP for a hotel in Corolla of 50 rooms or more. The application must also include a traffic impact analysis and stormwater retention plan prepared by a qualified engineer. A hotel operates 24 hours a day, and a very large one will be bringing much more traffic of short-stay visitors during the peak summer months. Currently, you and the county's other officials are blind to the traffic and other impacts of a large hotel. The proposed Saga Hotel would be by far the largest in the history of Corolla, many times the size of the attractive 42-room inn at Corolla Light that Commissioner White's father built. Unlike the 130-room Hampton Inn with its beachfront location and a relatively isolated location with the Audubon Sanctuary behind it, the proposed Saga Hotel is directly behind the existing Whalehead Residential Development and would share access from Route 12 at Herring Street with a proposed 127-unit multifamily complex and retail stores, as well as the existing residential developments on the south and east sides of the intersection. The backups at Herring would likely even be further worsened by the proposed hotel because it's, the new ABC Liquor Store is across the street from the proposed hotel. So hotel guests could walk across Route 12 at or near Herring to reach the ABC store. Herring connects to the residential street of Corolla Drive, which runs parallel to Route 12 for three miles and can be used to bypass Herring Street or reach Harry by using it as a back way. I and many others in Whalehead fear residential Corolla Drive will be converted to a busy through street in summer weekends as Google Maps advises visitors to avoid the Route 12 backups at Herring Street that these massive projects would create by going up Corolla Drive to reach the hotel or destinations further north by driving up Corolla Drive and cutting back Route 12 north of the proposed hotel on connecting Shad Street. Pedestrians, including children, walk across and along Corolla Drive to go to and from the beach every day all summer. The safety of those pedestrians should be a matter of critical importance, but the UDO requires no SUP for hotels regardless of size, and even with the multifamily project, does not require a, uh, uh, which does require an SUP, no traffic impact analysis is required with the application or at any time by the county. By requiring a, a SUP permit and a traffic impact analysis to be submitted with the SUP application for a large hotel and other high-density projects in Corolla, you as the county's elected stewards will have information needed to assess the traffic and other impacts of the project to make informed judgments and have the authority to do something about them. The first and most important requirement of a special use permit is that the developer must show the board of commissioners in a public hearing that the proposed use does not injure public health or safety. The proposed largest hotel in the history of Corolla and other large-scale high-density projects should be required to meet the burden as a matter of compelling public policy. My third proposal is to better balance the interests of the existing community and new commercial development by requiring the commercial structures have a 75-foot setback from a lot line and joining existing single-family residences to the max to extent practicable. This flexible standard would apply throughout the county, but is particularly needed in Corolla. Land use policy 2.2 currently prohibits poorly planned commercial encroachment near residential areas. The problem is that this policy is currently just empty lip service because the UDO setback rules do not require the commercial structures have any further setbacks from existing residences than residences have from each other, which is only 10 feet from a side lot line and 25 feet in the rear. This, again, makes no public policy sense. No Currituck County homeowner should have to endure having a commercial enterprise so close to the residence if it is practicable to have a greater setback. The proposed Saga 172-room hotel is on a lot well over five acres, but the back of the hotel is nevertheless placed at the minimum 25 feet from the backyards of the homes in Corolla Drive, the same amount that would be required for another single-family home. The county's current setback rules allow commercial developers to show no regard for the use and enjoyment of adjoining single-family homes that were there before the commercial development. This proposal goes a modest but important way toward ameliorating that. The new provision is flexible, where smaller commercial lots may mean a 75-foot setback is not practicable. My fourth proposal is to require the commercial buildings not exceed two stories up to 30 feet in height within 100 feet of a lot line shared with an existing family residence. This community standard is almost identical to the current UDO provision that requires multifamily buildings to not exceed two stories within 100 feet of a lot line shared with existing single-family homes. No homeowner should have to endure a large commercial building looming over their yard and home, and existing homeowners deserve at least the same distance from a three-story commercial building as they do from a multifamily building. Before I go into a bit more depth on the public policy support for these proposals, I gratify and pleased that the county planning department staff supports all of them, as was just reported by Jenny Turner, and that the citizen planning board, which you appointed, voted unanimously on May 14th to recommend that you adopt them. The staff and planning board support them in part because they are all, I quote, "consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine Currituck Vision 2040 Land Use Plan." And the public policies that support these proposed amendments are your own. Vision 2040's Corolla-area land use plan. Vision 2040's Corolla Area Land Use Policy 1.2 at page 88 states in part, "Consider the community's concerns of overdevelopment and making decisions regarding density in Corolla." The community has no meaningful way for those concerns to be considered unless a special use permit with a public hearing is required for large-scale high-density developments in Corolla. The Vision 2040 Land Use Plan identified traffic and stormwater management as two key problems that Corolla continues to struggle with. That's on page 17. And C C Act 27, which Jenny referred to earlier, at the Corolla U D O amendments section of the vision plan, directed the U D O to be amended to require a traffic impact analysis for uses that will generate a significant increase in vehicle activity. That's at page 104. That directive has not been implemented either. Even more specific, the Vision 24 Plan, C C Act 83, at county policies provisions on page 122 directs the county to establish a threshold and requirement for traffic impact analysis for uses that will generate a significant increase in traffic volumes and carefully consider the impacts of proposed developments when making land use decisions. This policy directive has not been implemented. Even for, excuse me, for projects that currently require a special use permit, such as multifamily, no T I As required by the county, and you are blind as to traffic impacts. Unless the U D O requires a S U P for large-scale high-density projects of multiple types, like the largest hotel in the history of Corolla, you will lack authority and information to determine the impacts of those projects and will remain powerless to do anything about them. By requiring a special use permit and a traffic impact analysis and stormwater retention engineering plan to be submitted with the application for multiple types of developments of 30,000 square feet and hotels of 50 or more rooms, you, the elected stewards of the county's welfare, will be able to make informed judgments about those impacts and have authority to take actions that you deem appropriate. Importantly, with a special use permit proceeding, the community will have an opportunity to provide information about those impacts. Corolla Land Use Policy 1.2 requires consideration of the community's concerns of overdevelopment in making decisions regarding density. With these S U P amendments, this policy will no longer be just empty words. I chose the 30,000-square-foot threshold to match the threshold that the U D O has for shopping center S U Ps requiring T I As, which could be located near a four-lane highway anywhere in the county. With Corolla's main road being the two-lane Route 12, 30,000 square feet is a conservative threshold to require a S U P with impact assessments including a T I A. The shopping center is the only use that currently requires a traffic impact analysis into the U D O and has specific standards at U D O Section 5.9.3D that are adopted by reference in my proposal. These standards include a requirement that the study be based on peak traffic periods and be conducted by a professional engineer. This will enable a qualified and professional assessment of whether the proposed developments at Herring and Corolla will turn a residential Corolla Drive into a through street dangerous to beach-going pedestrians and changing the quiet neighborhood character of the street by visitors seeking to avoid a backup on Route 12 at the Herring intersection. It may be contended that the North Carolina Department of Transportation Review of Developments will address any traffic issues. N C D O T does not even start its review until after a project is approved for construction by the county, so it is not timely. Its focus will be on the traffic flow at the state road access point of the development, which will be the Herring intersection, providing access to both the hotel and the multifamily complex. It may require the builder to pay for light or length intern lanes at Herring Street, but will not address the risk that visitors will seek to avoid weekend backups on Route 12 by using a residential side street, as happens in southern shores every summer weekend. It is up to the county to look out for the welfare of the community before a construction project is approved. Requiring a stormwater retention plan by a required professional engineer with the S U P application is important to ensure that you, the county's elected officials, can assess it and that the community has an opportunity to present its own assessment. At the November 6th B O C meeting Chairman White had stated, I'm sorry to pick on Chairman White here, but that the issues regarding the Saga multifamily development should be reviewed when the major site plan was completed and came back to the B O C for review. But once a special use permit is approved by the B O C, it does not come back to you for review. It is reviewed by the county planning department staff. That also means there is no public review of the developer's plan or opportunity for the community to present its own engineering assessment at a public hearing. A valuable example of the importance of making a T I A and stormwater retention plan part of an S U P application was a recent S U P proceeding in Manio. There, the developer had proposed a retail commercial development at an intersection that already served a residential community. The town council required a T I A and stormwater plan to be submitted as part of the S U P approval process with public hearings. At the S U P hearing, the community demonstrated that the developer's stormwater plan did not meet Manio's requirements and the developer's T I A had erroneous measurements and was unreliable in other respects. You can watch those proceedings on YouTube if you're willing to sit through the ads. My proposed amendments, and I appreciate that you don't use YouTube to post your video recordings. My proposed amendments to the U D O ensure that the Corolla major developments impact issues, including the traffic and stormwater retention issues, are addressed in a public hearing before you and subject to input of the affected community, because this only applies to large-scale projects and only opposes additional cost of projects that necessarily have large-scale project budgets. I urge you to accept the planning department staff and planning board's unanimous recommendations to give yourselves the tools to enable informed and effective development public policy decisions. The proposal to require the commercial buildings have a 75-foot setback from existing family homes to the maximum extent practicable gives substance to the currently empty Land Use Policy 2.2 to prohibit commercial encroachment near residential areas. Moreover, the U D O Community Compatibility Standards provides at Section 5.10B that "one intent of the standards is to protect the character of existing single-family detached development from negative impacts resulting from more intense and incompatible adjacent forms of development." I submit that this codified policy is largely meaningless if, as currently permitted, a massive commercial complex like a 172-room hotel on a parcel of over five acres can be placed just 25 feet from the rear lot line of existing single-family residences. The proposed hotel even places a pool next to those homes, which will likely have loud music and be floodlit during the night.
Sir, is that from experience or is that just an assertion?
Well, I've been to hotel pools that are, that play loud music.
Right, and what kind of pool?
And have floodlight and are floodlit for security during the night. I don't know if your rules would restrict that or not.
Yeah.
They do at 10 o'clock, I understand.
Well, we also have a full cutoff on our lights.
The, where a commercial developer of a large multi-acre parcel knows the lot adjoins existing homes, there should be a much greater setback than is currently provided by the setback rules, which are the same, as I noted, for residential and commercial development. Importantly, the proviso to the maximum extent practicable provides flexibility for smaller commercial parcels and is a specific defined meaning under the U D O. As noted in the staff report, it means that no feasible or practical alternative exists as determined by the county in all possible efforts to comply with the standards or regulations to minimize potential harmful impacts have been undertaken by the applicant. Adoption of the 75-foot commercial building setback from single-family residents to the maximum extent practicable will provide some substance to the county's own codified policy. I want to add one more policy fairness point in support of the proposed S U P requirements and the setback requirement. The commercial lot adjoining Corolla Drive residences was originally zoned as residential. As recently as 2001, a sketch plan showed plans for single-family homes to be built there. It was rezoned to commercial by the county in the early 2000s before there was a requirement for community meetings. Many of the homes on adjoining Corolla Drive were built in the 1990s, and multiple current owners, including full-time residents located behind the proposed hotel, bought their house in the 1990s when the parcel behind their home was zoned as residential. I do not know if the county has done this or will do this with other parcels that adjoining existing single-family homes, but the county's own dramatic zoning changes further support requiring developers to provide some reasonable setback protection for existing single-family homes throughout the county and to require a special use permit with a public hearing assessing impacts and enabling community input for such projects in Corolla. The height restriction I proposed for commercial structures adjoining existing single-family homes almost exactly matches the existing restriction for multifamily structures. It was particularly shocking to see the sketch plan for the proposed three-story hotel at Herring Street to be just 25 feet from the rear lot lines of existing single-family residences. This proposal also gives some substance to Land Use Policy 2.2 that prohibits commercial encroachment near residential areas and the codified U D O Community Standards stated purpose at Section 5.10B to protect single-family detached development from negative impacts resulting from more intense incompatible adjacent forms of development. It is not unusual, for example, for commercial buildings to have floodlights and security cameras at the corner of a building. No homeowner in the county should have to suffer a three-story commercial structure looming over their backyard. I want to thank you for your attention and consideration of these proposals, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
I just have another, I just want to ask the attorney again to clarify. Yeah, I know we'd taught this before, but if this board approves this tonight and the appeal goes in favor of the landowner, would this, would this, if we approve it, they wouldn't have to abide by this, is what your, the vested rights probably would allow him to supersede this?
Yes.
So this would not affect him if he wins?
Correct.
Or the county, whatever.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
If I might just say, the, the special use permit that was appealed was for the multifamily. Only the multifamily project required a special use permit. The other permit that they requested was to eliminate open space, which may have affected the amount of, the size of the, both the multifamily and the hotel, but there was no special use permit proceeding for the hotel. It's not pending on any appeal.
But everything up to this point, though, I mean, it would, yeah, he could, yeah, it depends on the appeal process, correct.
Okay. That's all I have, I just want some clarification.
Okay.
I got a what-if question. Going back to what you said about the end at Corolla Light burning down, what if Monterey Plaza burned down? That's within...
That's, well, that's, so my house backs up basically to food line, or double B D and A building. And, yeah, that's, that's my concern. One of my concerns is, is that if we, if this passes in its current format, that how does it affect future development or, and/or rebuilding efforts? Corolla's getting old, there is a very good chance that something may get demolished in favor of putting something near there or rebuilding it, or you have a fire or some other...
Tomato patch.
Tomato patch. Although that wouldn't affect this particularly, but it's a prime example of what can happen, right? It's too safe because it doesn't back up to any residential, just by happenstance.
Well, let me just say two things to that. Remember, that setback is to the maximum extent practicable. So that's, gives it flexibility, so that if it's not practicable to have that setback, then the developer would be permitted not, not to have that setback that far. But I would actually just say as to, you know, the food line, you know, it's probably not wonderful to have truck loading, loading, you know, big vans coming up and unloading in the back of that food line 25 feet from the back of the residential residences. And one could say that it would be practicable with that large parking lot to have the building structures, including the loading dock in the rear, moved closer to Route 12 and create more space which could be used for parking in between the structures and the lot. But I'm, I'm, but I think the key thing from a public policy standpoint is that 75 feet is to the maximum extent practicable, and that's a flexible standard.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Hill? Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
This is, again, a public hearing, and do we need to take a break before we jump into public comment?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll take a five-minute recess. It's something. All right, I'll call the meeting back into order again. After some discussion with, with our applicant this evening and the Board of Commissioners, we're gonna continue this into our second meeting in September, which is, let me do, what do we say, January 16th of September? So this, oh, there she is, hi Jenny. So this, this item will remain open as a public hearing. I'm gonna move to, to move it to that date to be heard and further discussed. In the interim, we will be meeting with our planning staff to go through some of the general concerns that we have with existing development, how it may affect them, and a few other things.
And then working with the...
Well, I told the applicant, we would notify him when we have that work session so that he can, he can be present to hear the discussion as well if possible. Thank you, sir. All right, we have motion of second. Any further discussion on the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you all. All right, next up, we have P B 24-15, Brandon Reed, request for unified development amendment to the U D O, Chapter 4, use standards to allow sales and rentals of low-speed vehicles and golf carts subject to zoning compliance permit. Jason, you're back.
Back.
Mister man, how you been?
Good, good.
All right.
It's all ready.
Okay.
The U D O version.
Thanks.
This is pretty straightforward text amendment. Basically, what we're doing here is recognizing the difference between regular vehicles and car lots and places that sell and rent golf carts and low-speed vehicles. So the applicant proposed to allow vehicles and, or golf carts and low-speed vehicles to be sold or rented with a zoning permit in general business zoning district, where before they were kind of lumped in with regular car lots that required a use permit. So here you can see we've added the Z, and we'll further clarify that in the specific All these requirements that you're seeing here are existing. These are the rules that apply to any automobile sales or rentals. These are all the same as they were in the ordinance already, and you can see down here at the end of the list, we've added I to say that use is limited to sales or rentals of low-speed vehicles and golf carts require a zoning compliance permit in the general business zoning district. And that is the extent of it. The staff and the planning board have recommended approval because it is consistent with Land Use Goals 2, Land Use Policy 2.2, Land Use Goal 3, and Economic Development Goal 1. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Would anyone like to hear from the applicant on this one, or?
Sure.
Okay.
Took the time to talk.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Come on up, Ms. Reed, how are you this evening?
I'm doing well.
All right, if you would, please introduce yourself.
My name is Brandon Reed. I'm the applicant for this text amendment. Really, we're just trying to bring some clarification to the U D. Golf carts and low-speed vehicles aren't even really mentioned at all in the U D, or U D O. And so they've, you know, golf cart sales have been kind of treated as retails, and L S V's have been kind of lumped in with automobiles, and we're just trying to bring some clarity to it and make it a little bit easier for us.
Did I read in the agenda packet that when people come into your place of business and order it, it's sent directly to them, so?
Right, so, you know, during COVID, you know, they have any inventory, so you, you know, as a retailer, you almost had to stock just about anything you could get your hands on. Nowadays, they got tons of them. So most of the time now, we have, you know, three different models, they'll come in and say, you know, I want that one in blue, and it's shipped right to their house in a couple weeks, so. And that's better for us, that's better, you know, we don't have to carry the inventory or anything like that, and then the customer gets what they want instead of doing what works.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, so, part of the challenge that I see that you have, and, and I'm, is, how do people take them for test drives?
Most of them don't, honestly.
Hope for the best, guy. Hope for the best, guy.
It's a golf car, what are you there?
It's a warranty golf car. No, it's a low-speed ground.
Oh, okay.
Just curious.
They'll drive them, you know, they might drive it around a little parking lot or something, but, you know. Most of the time, they've already rented one or driven one or something, you know, they, they know what they want, they know how it's gonna ride.
Okay. Anything else? Give it the stress test and see if they can go through the bunker and out the other side?
How much money can it drive through? Not enough.
All right. Thank you for coming out this evening, I appreciate it. All right, this is a public hearing, as I mentioned, and we have public comment. I do not have anyone signed up for public comment. Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak this evening? All right, seeing no one, I will close the public comment and look to the board if there's no further discussion for a motion.
Oh, go ahead. No, go ahead.
No?
I approve to approve PB 24-15, Brandon Reed, Low-Speed Vehicle Text Amendment because the request is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan in the UDO, including Land Use Goal 3 and Economic Development Goal 1.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, carries unanimously. Moving on to new business. The first order of business is, business is an ordinance amending the planning board membership. And we got a couple emails and calls about this, so I guess the county attorney can take a second to explain that.
Yes. Just trying to find it. Okay. So really, this is just a housekeeping ordinance amendment. Currently, the UDO, it has the planning board at seven members and the Code of Ordinances said nine. So it has changed the number of members to just coincide with what the Code of Ordinance says and as, and also how they're appointed. So nothing really changed, just to make things consistent.
Okay. Thank you. Comments, questions, concerns? All right, can I have a motion for approval, please?
I move for approval.
Thank you. Second. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next up is another ordinance to amend the county wastewater reduction of interest and late payment penalties. I know everyone will like this one.
Yeah, so I might, this might be a tag-team effort with county manager and myself because this is some math involved and it's, it was kind of difficult to wrap our heads around, but... So currently, if, if a water customer, a county water customer is late on their payment, after 21 days, they get charged, I think it's 10, 10% interest. And then each month, that percentage is based on, so they, 10% gets tacked on.
Compounding interest.
And then, yes, compounding interest, exactly, which just seemed a bit excessive. And so the, so Sandra, our finance director, she came up with this idea that instead of there being that compounded interest and 10%, that there be a 1% charge after 21 days of being late. And so that's the first month. So first month, you're, you're late 21 days paying your water bill and then you get a 1% charge added to that. If you are late the second month after 21 days, so on day 22, your water gets cut off, you get the 1% charge on what's owed plus a $50 late fee. Let's say you go into month three and you're still late, so your water's still cut off. You get the 1% charge on what's owing, not in, not with the $50 added, just on what's owing, then plus $50. So there's like a $50 each month, but there's no reconnection fee as long as they get, as long as they get current. And so that's kind of where, like, so it's a reduced percentage and then there's this added $50 late payment, but no reconnection fee.
So the $50 payment, I mean, the $50 fee is each month, so?
Yeah, starting with the second month.
So if they're late for a third month, it's $50. Fourth month's $50. So after four months, there's a $200 fee that they owe plus 1% on what they owed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what I needed clarification for.
Hopefully, they're turning that one before four months.
No, and we've, now, let me ask, let me bring this up. Now, I know with the bill pay company that we used to have now, I know we've simple it, simplified it and dumied it down. We'll go that way, how about that? I might have threw a new word out. Simplify, y'all, feel free to use that.
That's a good George Bush word right there.
Like I said, the water, and I know a lot of people where they had, like, showed on their paperwork, hey, checking statement, water bill paid, and there was two different billing companies, which I believe we really got rid of one, I just want to make sure.
I don't know what billing company we, I don't know the answer to that question.
Well, we used to have more than one and somebody had, this was about two or three years ago, they had more than one. They had paid their water bill, showed coming out of their checking account, paid their water bill, water gets cut off. It's like a holiday weekend. Shows on their checking statement, I saw it, paid. There was more billing companies, which I believe we got rid of one of, it was about two or three years ago. So persons actually paid their bill, shows on their checking statement on their cell phone, use round numbers, $100, water. Simplification, we'll throw another one out there. So $100 and then their water got cut off and it shouldn't have been cut off. So they get $50 credited to their water bill.
Well, we got, we owe them 50.
Correct.
We should make it reciprocal.
But, yeah, I'm just saying, like, I know that's happened.
What did the other company do?
Right.
Well, it was a credit showing with one and then like, and Sandra can attest this, there was a credit showing with one.
Where are we going with this?
Okay.
If we're cutting somebody's water off and we're still using these two bill pay companies and somebody's paid their water, to my knowledge, I think...
What?
The county bills.
The county's doing the billing now.
Yeah, but there was a thing you could pay, there was a company. What's that?
That's why we bought a bank.
Yeah, okay.
So we hold the money.
So we hold the money there. You could pay with rolling.
That should be an issue, right? That should not be an issue.
To my knowledge, I just want to make sure, I, look, I know four or five people that this happened to. And I mean, this was a few years ago.
Been a few years.
Yes.
A little simplification.
Yeah.
No, no, it didn't.
I think what you might be referring to, I'm not sure, is there were, I think there were some instances where people were maybe notified that they were being cut off and then they were paying their bill as someone was coming onto the property to cut, to turn the meter off.
No, they, they use, Sandra, I had conversations with Sandra. There was more than one bill pay company we paid and somebody paid, they showed, I mean, like, literally, I seen it on people's...
Kevin, you been in court, asked and answered.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we're only using one now, so I'm good, we have the bank.
All right.
Thank you for as simple as eyes and that for me, Bob.
Okay, now that we've gotten through the dual billing cycle, any further discussion? We have a motion for approval. Thank you, second. We have a second. No one? Sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up is board appointments.
Oh, we have one more ordinance.
Oh, I have one more? Oh, wow, oh, I said, it's water, I just focused in on water, sorry. Ordinance of amendment, or, an ordinance to amend, now I can't even talk, Kevin. Chapter 13, definition of county water system.
Okay, so this is just making sure that we make it very clear that Ocean Sands is also a county water system. Our Code of Ordinances makes it clear that Mainland and Southern Outer Banks is a county water system, but it does not make clear that Ocean Sands is. So that's all this is doing, is saying that that is a county water system.
Okay, well, I'll move for approval on that one.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll do, move on to board appointments for the Animal Service Assistance and Control Advisory Board.
That's my appointment.
Your appointment?
Julie Morgan replaced Nancy, Nancy did a great job. Julie Morgan volunteers at the shelter all the time and I've talked to Rachel and Julie will fit in well.
Okay, so that's a motion for her?
Yes, please.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.